By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask that we retain standings for most of the signs for Anne Vogel, recently County Clerk of Passa Way. I have a few words I want to say about Pam. Pam actually started with the county in nineteen seventy six as our county historian. In two thousand, Pam took position of Records Management Technician. Then, two thousand two, she was named Records Manager. January one, two thousand four, to retirement, December twenty third, two thousand twenty three, she is elected to the position of County Director. Even after retirement, Pam came back into the county to volunteer in the historian's office. Pam was sincere when doing her job with the taxpayers of Warren County. If you served on one of their committees where Pam would meet with us, you know that. Most of us in this chamber has been sworn in one time or another by Pam to our own cause, to our own. Pam served with distinguished integrity as Warren County Clerk. Pam will be missed by all, and we wish her family the best. She did so many things for the community. When I first met her, her door was always open. She always, most times, had a smile on her face, and she was very helpful to all of us. And all the digitizing of the records here in Warren County is due to what Pam did by getting all those grants. She worked very, very hard at that, and she's going to be sorely missed by all of us. I think she was a friend to all of us. So, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Gahnover?
Here.
Mr. Mayday?
Here.
Mr. Diamond?
Gilligan?
Here.
Ms. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Driscoll?
Mr. Patchett?
Here.
Mr. Drossy?
Here.
Mr. Beat?
Here.
Mr. Grisito?
Here.
Mr. Merlino?
Here.
Mr. Straub?
Here.
Mr. Wild?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Strainer?
Here.
Mr. Uto?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Runyon?
Here.
Chairman Garrity?
Here.
Longest established.
First item of business in motion approved is September nineteenth and October sixth, Special Board Meeting Minutes. We have a motion by Supervisor Bean, second by Supervisor Strout. Any discussion? All those in favor, so you can fire to saying aye.
Aye.
Next up is John Bowe, Executive Director of Cornell Cooperative Extension. John's here to present four H Achievement Awards for two thousand twenty five, which include Top Superintendent's Spirit of Four H. John, would you please assist the winners?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Supervisor Garrity, Chairman of the Supervisors. And today, I'd like to present three of our award winners. The awards are in two different categories. The top superintendent is a youth or youths picked for their attitude, their hard work, their positive experience working at our Warren County Youth Fair, which is essentially a job train performance program. The evaluation criteria include attendance, arriving on time, being properly dressed for work, completing tasks, and overall attitudes of the youth while doing their work. The superintendent program is very much like a first job experience, requiring applying for, interviewing for, being selected for, and then completing the task. Hafsa Kfar, age twelve, Glen's Falls, is one of the top two superintendents tied for top superintendent for two thousand twenty five. Hafsa started in four H in two thousand twenty two after showing several projects at Warren County Youth Fair. She has expanded her interest into shooting sports, hiking, public presentations, wildlife habitat education or web, and crafts. She's now a junior leader of the four H Crocheting Program. This was her third year showing at the fair and second year as a fair superintendent. So, Hafsa, if you'd come up here for it. Congratulations. The second top superintendent is Sophia Moreau, also twelve, of Lake Luzerne. Sophia's been a member of four H since two thousand nineteen. She's also participated in shooting sports, crafts, arts, robotics, public presentations, and wildlife habitat education. This was Sophia's fourth year exhibiting at the fair and her second year as a fair superintendent. So, Sophia, if you'd join me up here. The second category of award is called the Spirit of Four H Award. It's presented to a four H member who has participated in public presentations regularly, participates in the county, club, or special interest program, then participates in some New York State four H Shooting Sports, uh, four H program above and beyond our county. These state or regional events may include public presentations, New York State Fair, career explorations at the Cornell Campus, STAR State Teen Action Retreat, which is a junior leader program. This requirement may also include New York State four H Shooting Sports Champions, which is what Tyler did. So, Tyler, if you want to come up here, age eleven. He's from Lake Luzerne. He originally worked with Cornell Cooperative Extension of four H of Warren County when we partnered with Hallie Luzerne Central School and Extended School Day. And this is where Tyler first became active with the four H Shooting Sports Program and found his archery interest in two thousand twenty one. Since then, he's actively participated in basic, intermediate, and advanced archery programs over the next couple of years. And this year, he attended the New York State four H Shooting Sports Championship in Bath, New York, where he won all three of his age categories. So. Thank you, folks.
Next, we have the presentation of the anniversary proclamation to Public Health, and Janelle Jones, the current Director, is here to accept this proclamation. A few words about Public Health. I was, uh, I'd like to congratulate them on their achievement and longevity. And I must say, I don't know the first public health nurse. I'd be lying if I told you I did. But I did know three of them, and they were all outstanding individuals. And, uh, yesterday, I made a tour of the office, and I've been on tours of their office down there a few times. And the transformation that they have done down there over the past year, I think everybody in this room needs to go down and just look and see what how it has become. It was cluttered. There was tons and tons of files on top of it, piled up on file cabinets. Now, it's bright, it's open, a lot of sun comes into the area, and it was really a joy to tour the area and see some of the public health nurses. I've had the experience of being treated by them in the past, and, uh, they're just, we have one of the best organizations in the county we have for many years. Janelle, on behalf of Warren County, I want to present you with this proclamation, and I know that there are things you'd like to say.
Morning, everyone. If I could take just a few minutes to bring up a few of my team and make introductions, I'd like to do that. I'm going to have Kat Belden, our Deputy Director, come up. She's been with our agency for thirty-four years, thirty-five years. I'm sorry, I'm not good at math, but she first came in nineteen ninety. I'm also going to invite Val Wiznot up. She's been with our team. She came in nineteen ninety-one. She's our Assistant Director of Home Care. I have Dan Durkey here with us. He's been with our agency since two thousand one. He's our Public Health Program Administrator. And I'm also going to put Robert Beetz on the spot. He's from NICE HO, which is New York State Accounting Health Officials, and he's come up here to help celebrate with us today. So, as I said, good morning, everybody. We're here to kick off our hundred-year celebration of Warren County Health Services. I was told I had a minute for every year to talk. It all started with Committee on Tuberculosis when they recommended to the Warren County Board of Supervisors to hire their first public health nurse. In January of nineteen twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution to hire that first public health nurse. Fast forwarding to nineteen sixty-six, Joan Greshkot was hired as the first supervising public health nurse, later the first Director of Public Health in nineteen seventy-five. What a vision she had. She pioneered, she created systems on behalf of the county to protect, prevent, and promote the health and safety of all. Even when she retired in nineteen ninety-seven, she remained extremely active on boards in all facets of healthcare to her death in July of two thousand twenty-one. She knew people, the people she hired, the people she selected for succession planning. She was a true custodian of our department and the community's health and safety. When she retired, she had the vision for succession, and she handpicked Pat Hour to carry on the public health torch, which she did. Pat Hour was another amazing woman who pioneered and created paths to health and wellness. When I look at a hundred years of our agency's history and all the gaps that have been filled and met, the outbreaks that have been mitigated, Helen Roberts, our first nurse in nineteen twenty-five, Joan Greshkot, and Pat Hour provided the leadership for all of this, but not without the help of many dedicated staff and the support from day one of the Board of Supervisors. I would like to unveil a commemorative poster that we put together, and I would like to provide a special thank you to Lisa Lemuth, who helped us design this with her expertise. I also want to make a special announcement. We have a wonderful reception plan that starts at eleven-thirty today that we tried to plan so that it would be after your board meeting in hopes that many of you could come. We've put out a lot of displays, a lot of time and effort have gone there for your pepper freshments, and we'd love to see you there. I'd really like to thank our staff, the county historian, and the Historical Society for their efforts for this beautiful day. So, we're all going to focus and prepare.
Well, we have the Gafford Health, which was the site of our first public health clinic in Glen's Falls. You've got Lake George there. It's something that we identified with the Warren County. This is a symbol for public health. We have some of our older pictures from some of our older public health clinics, and then the color reflects of our newer clinics. We included our Gravies Clinic. At the bottom, we're commemorating our nineteen twenty-five and twenty twenty-five. And one of the mottos we came up with was Pat Hour. Same for John Leslie. Do all the good you can, find all the means you can, and all the ways you can, and all the times you can, to all the people you can, as long as you ever can. And our agency is a treatout. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll open up the meeting to privilege of more public comment. Anybody wish to address the board today? Please come up to Paul and state your name for the record.
Good morning. I just want to make sure this is an appropriate time to speak about the proposed increase on the real estate tax transfer. Okay, all right, great. So, I did read the art. My name is Linda Clark. I live over on Glen Lake. I did read the article in the Post Star regarding the Warren County thinking about increasing the real estate, or actually imposing a real estate transfer tax, which would be an additional two percent tax on top of the two percent tax that's already charged by the state. I've also learned that there's also some consideration about additional mortgage tax, recording tax, an additional mortgage recording tax. I guess I have to say here is that I was a bit disturbed to see that we here in Warren County are looking at increasing taxes, especially when there are states across our country, including Florida, Illinois, Kansas, Montana, North Dakota, North Dakota, and Tennessee, that are all eliminating property taxes, and especially property taxes for senior citizens. These are all in discussions. It seems to me that we should be going in the other direction of lowering or eliminating taxes on properties. I just also wanted to let you know that I did look up where New York stands in terms of property taxes. We are the fourth state in the country for the highest property taxes, the fourth state. And you're talking about increasing property taxes in some form or another. Again, I highly would like to suggest that you work within your budgets, and instead of trying to increase these property taxes on people to do all these extra things, scale it back, guys. All right? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board? We're going to, uh, we have a couple of public hearings, so I have the chair to read to them.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren County is considering the adoption of a proposed local law number three for the year two thousand twenty-five entitled a local law imposing an additional mortgage reporting tax in Warren County. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at ten a.m. The supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center at thirteen forty, State Route Nine, Queens Brandyard, at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law number three for the year two thousand twenty-five will be heard concerning same. A copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Any, uh, any comments on the local law number three, two thousand twenty-five, please come up and address the board? Any more discussion? Suppose what the law number three supervisor passes?
Yeah, um, I guess my, my first thought is, um, I want to make sure that we're mitigating the effect to our residents in Warren County. I guess I would just pose the question that are we mitig, like, there's several different way. I recognize that we have a budget and we need to, you know, produce enough revenue to pay for our budget. And I'm just asking the question, is this the way of doing it with the least impact on Warren County taxpayers, or is there a better way? So, I, I think what I, if I understand the question you're asking, if we can have something as an alternative to charging an additional mortgage tax.
I'm just asking the question, like, is sales tax going to have a, an increase in sales tax? Would that potentially have less of an impact on the residents of Warren County than a mortgage tax? I mean, I, I guess I'm just assuming that the reason we're we're raising this is to produce more revenue so we can, you know, have enough to pay for our budget. Am I misunderstanding?
Uh, no, that's, this all goes into it. So, uh, the additional mortgage tax applies only to people, of course, who are taking out a mortgage on a home. Property tax applies to everyone who has, who owns a home. Sales tax applies to everyone who makes a purchase in the county. So, we've talked about the impact of each, certainly a sales tax increase affects the people in the county, but it also affects, some of that is borne by people who come to visit, actually about thirty-five percent to forty percent, some people believe, would be paid by people external. So, I mean, I don't, we have not done an analysis that said, at this point, we'd be better off not doing a mortgage tax because it would be offset by an increase in sales tax or anything. No, thanks.
Thank you for answering my question, Mr. Tucklin. It sounds like the worst option would be to increase property tax on the community. So, it sounds like between this and sales tax are really our only two options to produce more revenue.
But it's my understanding, we already do this tax, and it's just a, it's annually, it's keeping it going. This is the tax that we use to pay for, like we did the contract with CDTA. This is where this one goes, the public transportation. And correct. It's a continuation of mortgage tax that we have to renew each year.
Okay, so this isn't a new, oh, then I misunderstood that. I apologize about that.
Let me clarify, it's not a new tax. It's a two percent that we have done every year required by law to renew it absolutely. It's a four percent. This is also used to pay for the CDTA.
No, that's, that's correct. And we have to, we're going to have to renew this portion of the tax every two years. And it does pay for CDTA.
Thank you.
Can I quickly clarify? This was part of a municipal home rule request that this board voted on. It went to the legislature back in January, February, went through the legislature along with other counties to have this, what they call the additional mortgage tax. It's not called that because it's now some additional tax that is just being created. It's the name that the state legislation puts upon it. It's twenty-five cents per one hundred dollars for the value of the mortgage that's filed at the county clerk's office, and it's charged once when the mortgage is filed. This is an extension. The governor has signed what the legislature passed to permit Warren County and other counties to continue it. We have to go back every two years to ask for a new extension on this tax. Once it's signed and approved by the legislature, then it's up to the county to go through this process of passing a new local law. In this case, it's local law three of two thousand twenty-five, which will then allow this tax to be imposed in Warren County for the next two years until a renewal would need to occur again, and the process repeats itself. So, I hope that clarifies. This is about the recording tax on a mortgage. It's renewed every two years, and should this board approve this local law, it would be for two years, and at that point, it would come back before the board, once that process is followed through and completed again in the future, as to whether or not it will go forward for an additional two. So, I hope that clarifies.
As we're getting local law.
Thank you. Is it two percent or point two-five? It is not a percentage. It's twenty-five cents for every hundred dollars of value of the mortgage that's being filed in the county clerk's office. And I understood that, and I know every year, every two years, we have to vote on it to, to extend the same. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if you quite had, you know, used on that or, but I hear ten, you know, two percent, but I know it was less, but that is not, it's not increasing. It's just going on. Folks, it's a law. Thank you.
Yeah, I misunderstood. I thought it was a, it's.
Anybody else? I'll keep the hearing open for a little bit. We'll move to our center.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering the adoption of a proposed local law number four for the year two thousand twenty-five entitled a local law to authorize overriding the property tax levy limit established by General Municipal Law Section Three C for the two thousand twenty-six Warren County budget. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on October sixth, two thousand twenty-five, public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at ten a.m. in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, thirteen forty, State Route Nine, Queens Brandyard, at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law number four for the year two thousand twenty-five will be heard concerning same. Copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Let me clear this local law. Are this public hearing open? Anybody wish to address the board on this? Seeing no questions, I'll declare a local law, uh, local law number four closed. Or chance on the local law number three, anybody in the group? And I'll declare a local law number three, public hearing, awesome folks. Today, we'll go into report of committees, Chairman's report for October, September nineteenth, attended the last Board of Supervisors meeting and a local festival, very successful local festival. On twenty-third, I attended committee meetings of health services, human services, tourism, and acting tax. The twenty-fourth, I attended APA Local Government Meeting at Long Lake. On the twenty-fifth, I attended county facilities, public works, our operations, environmental concerns, and economic growth committee meetings. On the twenty-ninth, I attended PBA negotiations here at their county. October first, I attended legislative rules, personnel penetration, and higher education budget committee meetings. On October sixth, I attended special meeting of Board of Supervisors. On October seventh, I attended a meeting of Lake George, Lake George, Lake Champlain Regional Campaign Board here in our chambers. On October fifteenth, I attended a budget discussion meeting with Frank Thomas, Christine Norton, Tammy DeRozzo, and Monica Stark. And John Taflon talked about the two thousand twenty-six budget. And then yesterday on the fifteenth, I attended AA TV meeting in the nerve. So, that's my reports. Supervisor Gilligan, any reports?
No report.
Supervisor Kim.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The environmental concerns of real property tax services did meet. There are three resolutions in your pocket packet, three fifty-eight, three fifty-nine, and three sixty. Though three of those resolutions were administrative and out of committee. The committee will not be meeting in October. We will resume in November. Thank you.
Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County facilities met September twenty-fifth. Just the number of things, I'll just briefly highlight a couple of. Just the number of things I'll just briefly highlight a couple of them. One of them was the proposed budget for county facilities. Did discuss that. That was passed to the finance. Be scheduled for uh it was noted that we probably increased fees in the same rate charged, but um Queensberry. That would come back to the committee at our next meeting. Determine what the appropriate increases are. Additionally, continue to discuss the regional boards. Albany County. Warren County with the cost once. Fairly expensive undertaking. Estimates for Albany were higher than anticipated, so they put that up. We're gonna continue discussing. Additionally, I have the honor to chair the Human Services Committee. Twenty-third, one twenty-five. There are four resolutions in your package. Three sixty-four, three sixty-five, three sixty-six, six seven. Other than that, again, we preview the budget. Services Committee, which I will also chair is Tuesday, October forty-first at nine forty AM.
Thank you. Supervisor Baden.
Um, no report.
Supervisor Grasset.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Criminal Justice, Public Safety and Adversity Services Committee last met uh in September twenty-third. For you today, as a result of that meeting are resolutions three forty-eight, three fifty-six for your consideration. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, October twenty-first at nine AM. Uh, I will be absent for that meeting. My absence Supervisor Conover will chair this meeting. Thank you Supervisor Conover. And the report.
Supervisor Bate, no report.
Supervisor Castillo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the Occupancy Tax Committee met on September twenty-third. There are two resolutions in front of us today. Uh, Resolution three seventy, amending and extending agreement with Hood Communications uh for tourism revitalization and Resolution three seventy-one, amending Resolution four seventy-eight of twenty twenty-four, which authorized agreements with certain applicants, which um did not take place in twenty twenty-four. So it's a total of forty-one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars. We'll go right back into that line item. Uh, next meeting is October twenty-first at ten AM. Includes my report.
Supervisor Malino.
No report, sir.
Yes, thank you. The Life to Save the Rules supplemental operations met on October second, those twenty twenty-five, and there's two resolutions for you. Uh, the first of which is Resolution three sixty-eight, which is being proposed by the Warren County Board of Elections. Into the new schedule rate. It's a schedule rate that deals with the changing of the districts we've experienced recently. And the new schedule makes the costs for municipality fairer, yet still covers the costs in Board of Elections. And you can see the proposed uh formula on schedule way on the back of that revolution of resolution. Resolution three sixty-nine has already been talked about. It is the committee has uh agreed to uh extend law number three to the Board of Supervisors for their due consideration, which is under way now. Thank you.
Supervisor Wow.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Uh Personnel, Higher Education, Stration. Uh, met on October second. There's four resolutions in front of you, three seventy-seven through three eighty. Three seventy-seven is uh just adjustments to salaries, one's qualification officer, two is soon as this is closed. Three seventy-eight is the payment to C D T A discussed. Three seventy-nine is adopting a Department of Transportation Title Six final. In three days, the agreement over time for a time.
Supervisor McAllen. Supervisor Schrader.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Health Services met on September twenty-third. Uh, from that we have resolutions three sixty-one, three sixty-two and three sixty-three. Uh, three sixty-one is amending of Resolution number two eighty-three of twenty twenty-five, which authorizes amendments to agreements for expanding in-home services for the elderly program. Uh, three sixty-two is authorizing agreement with New York State Department of Health for quick infrastructure and grant program funding. Three sixty-three is authorizing continuation of an agreement with the New York State Department of Health and Health Research Institute for public health emergency preparedness plan funding. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor, you too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic growth and development met on September twenty-fifth. Resolution three fifty-seven is before us. Um, it authorizes an agreement for a training of one P training, not to see two thousand dollars. Um, uh job readiness skills and partnering local manufacturers after the training start. I think I noticed a little typo in the resolution that terminates twenty twenty-six and later, the same resolution says it terminates twenty twenty-five. Figure that one out, but um local seven seven three is providing the space for free for the training. Our committee is scheduled to meet again on October twenty-second. Thank you.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh Finance and Budget met also on uh October second. Uh, out of that meeting come twenty twenty-three resolutions. Uh, Resolution four, three forty-seven is supplemental appropriations for the county administrator, county attorney. And from the contingent account, uh four thousand dollars to building codes for auto repair and forty-four thousand ninety-eight dollars of their success to C T A contract. Uh, Resolution three forty-eight bends the twenty twenty-five Warren County budget for the county administrator, health services, public works, sheriff and workforce development. Three seventy-eight authorizes payment of C D A, C D T A contract. This is Warren County share of the New York State D O T statewide mass transportation operating assistance program funding. S T O A and it's approximately eleven thousand twenty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents per quarter. So that makes the uh forty-four oh ninety-eight. Uh, three eighty-one will uh enact local law number four of twenty twenty-five to authorize overriding property tax limit uh for the twenty twenty-six Warren County budget. Uh, three eighty-two authorizes the chair of board to execute contracts with vendors and contractors up to ten thousand dollars upon department head approval. And also amends the Warren County Purchase House. Uh, three eighty-three appropriates six hundred forty-four dollars vehicle reserved to the Department of Social Services. Three eighty-four authorizes early closing of the county offices on twelve twenty-four and twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five at two PM. Three eighty-five authorizes an intermunicipal agreement between Warren and Syracuse counties for communication site license to install emergency telecommunications equipment at the Warren County Municipal Center. Resolution three eighty-six amends Resolution one ninety-nine of twenty twenty-five, which authorized the sale of property at forty Stamford Street, Bud's Falls by SUNY Adirondack College and removes the one hundred thousand dollar minimum selling price. Uh, Resolution three eighty-seven decreases capital project H four oh four, Quaker Road pavement preservation by two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars of transfers of the funds back to the county road transfer count. Uh, Resolutions three eighty-eight through three ninety-one increases capital projects uh each four twenty-one Call Street and Grant Road, four hundred fifty thousand. Each four twenty-five Adirondack Bridge Beaver Pond Bridge Replacements, ten thousand each four two seven. Olsteadville Road over Marshall Brook Calder, two hundred nine thousand fifty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. And each four twenty-eight Bay Road Culver increases by eighty thousand. Uh, Resolutions three ninety-two and three ninety-three establishes capital projects, H four four seven Smith Road over thirteenth Brook Bridge Replacement uh for the amount of fifteen thousand. Each four four eight Dix Road, Dix Avenue reconstruction uh the local share of forty thousand dollars. Resolution three ninety-four appropriates two hundred twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars from A nine oh nine. Uh, this is the general fund balance to A sixty-one hundred point four seven oh uh Medicaid contract. Resolution three ninety-five appropriates thirty-two hundred dollars from the computer reserve. Uh, two thousand to Civil Defense Office for office equipment and twelve hundred dollars in accounting work for office. Resolution three ninety-six authorizes appropriation of nine thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars ninety-five cents to the village of Lake George for repair maintenance of the buildings, property and the parking attendants for May, June, July for the Charles Arwood Park. Resolution three ninety-seven authorizes five thousand six hundred dollars to the village of Lake George for water sewer and taxes for these Charles Arwood Park. Uh, both of those items come from deferred revenues. Uh, Resolution three ninety-eight authorizes county treasurer to issue a certificate of prospective cancellation of taxes from town Warrensburg Taxman Parcel to ten point two dash one dash one point two. Resolution three ninety-nine authorizes the county treasurer to write off uncollected twenty twenty-two state deed as bad debt the amount of four hundred forty-eight dollars. And Resolution four hundred authorizes the county treasurer to write off uncollected federal aid for the years twenty thirteen or twenty seventeen in the amount of uh ten thousand seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents as bad debt. And that concludes my report.
Supervisor Racket.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sure is a department met on September twenty-third. There's one resolution resulting from that, number three seventy-six. That is awarding the bid and authorizing an agreement with Freeport Press for the twenty twenty-six Warren County travel guide printing. And our next meeting, we won't have a meeting in October, our next meeting will be in November. That concludes my report.
Supervisor Hannah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public Works met on uh September twenty-five, represented in your packet by Resolution three seventy-two, seventy-five. The uh I believe the uh first uh three air self-explanatory, but I went uh bring your attention, three seventy-five, which support of the replacement of the the fish hatchery, the canvas is also back and bring.
Thank you. Supervisor Bate.
No report.
Or the county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, most of this month uh has been spent working on the budget uh with the budget team, finalize the county budget for twenty twenty-six. Uh, we expect the budget officer to be able to release the budget on October thirty-first as scheduled. Appreciate the support of the treasurer's office in helping finalize the revenue and tax estimation for twenty twenty-six and providing advice throughout. Twenty-four September, I attended the twenty twenty-five Special Olympics kickoff at the Queensberry Hotel. I'll attend the opening ceremonies tonight in Bud's Falls. Uh, just remind, and then those are tonight uh in the on the park outside the Queensberry. And uh reminder that the bicycle race is going to be run on the municipal center grounds this weekend on Saturday. Uh, twenty-fifth of September, I want to give kudos to the Office of the Aging for their senior picnic that was held at the Fish Hatchery. Uh, it was well attended by well over a hundred seniors, uh even with rain predicted and then rain that occurred. Uh, Office of Aging does a great uh job coordinating the running this picnic. Twenty-ninth of September, we had negotiations with the Police Benefits Association, P B A, our our what our labor attorney, uh Larry Poulter, which will brief the terms of our settlement agreement at the upcoming Personnel Committee. Uh, that's on the thirty. Thirty September, Executive Committee meeting with uh Lake George Regional Planning Board to get final approval of their strategic plan and budget. Uh, the regional planning board uh laid out a lot of components of their strategic strategic plan at the Forward Together Conference they had last week on the thirtieth. Um, regional planning boards doing a great job bringing grant money into our area. We had a follow-on board meeting on October fourteenth where we approved their budget and their strategic plan. Uh, yesterday I attended a workforce development job fair at Crandall Library. These job fairs are very well attended by job seekers as well as those who are hiring. Uh, budget cuts in the future may make it more difficult to have as many job fairs as we currently do or for for development teams trying to work through that. Uh, and again, a reminder, we'll host the bicycle races tomorrow at the Municipal Center Campus and the real property auctions is also uh on campus tomorrow beginning at nine AM. Thanks, Chairman.
The Warren County Chair. Good morning. Uh, I'll start my report with letting the board and the public know that regarding the even year election law, the Court of Appeals did issue an opinion on that yesterday. And the opinion was that the challenges that were raised by the charter counties in D-Or um did not set forth a constitutional violation. Therefore, the laws being upheld, practically what that means for Warren County is, as of today, the election that will occur in November will be an election for a one-year term. The open question remains the um difference in Warren County and uh six other sister counties, which has a combination of town supervisors, supervisors at large and city elected supervisors. Because the New York State Constitution requires city elected supervisors to be elected on odd years. Where the new state legislation sets forth a requirement for county supervisors to be elected in even years. Uh, we're gonna do a deep dive into that opinion to see if there's any basis for Warren County and the other sister counties that have a city wholly within their county uh to pursue uh legal uh avenues on the even year election law. And once we're able to do that analysis, we'll provide our recommendations to the um supervisors for their consideration and direction. Tomorrow is the annual tax foreclosure auction. The lawsuit, when it was filed in January of twenty twenty-five, had four hundred forty-five parcels listed in it. It is my understanding that as of this morning, there are fourteen that will go to auction. I I thank the uh real property uh tax services director in that office, as well as the county treasurer and the county treasurer's office, for their truly diligent efforts and work to get as many owners to pay these taxes so that we would have fewer and fewer parcels that need to go to auction tomorrow morning. Um, the auction begins at ten AM. Doors open, I believe, at nine AM. So, as I've said before, it's truly the goal of Warren County to have no properties go to tax foreclosure auction. Unfortunately, it is our last recourse and remedy after using every other tool at the county's disposal to get real property taxes paid that are doing help. So tomorrow morning, again, as of this morning, there's fourteen parcels that will go to auction. There have been no new notices of claims filed with Warren County since uh the board meeting. There have been no new notices of claims filed with Warren County since uh, the board meeting. On August fifteenth. We've received two new lawsuits. Uh, one is uh, Christie Truesdale versus the County of Warren. Uh, it's an unusual circumstance. The plaintiff filed in federal court. She sought to avoid paying the filing fees due to her inability to pay. That triggered a review by the district court judge, and the district court judge dismissed the lawsuit. Saying that on its face, it did not set forth any valid claims against Warren County. At that point, the plaintiff filed an appeal of that decision, Second Circuit Court of Appeals. So this is the first time I've been, as county attorney, where I was notified, this was by the Court of Appeals. Because we will have to defend that case on the appeal. And seek the Second Circuit to uphold the decision by the federal judge in the Northern District of New York. That has been submitted to travelers for coverage. And the second one is a inmate lawsuit, Nicholas Oderkirk. Against a correctional officer that's assigned to the jail. The claim also was, an initial review was done by the court because the inmate. Sought to not pay the filing fees. Almost all claims against the county were dismissed except one claim. Which has to do with an allegation of a civil rights violation. The general facts alleged are that while he was in court, waiting to be called. One of the transporting correctional officers grabbed his arm. And in grabbing his arm, the plaintiff alleges he suffered injuries. That was reported to travelers for coverage as well, and will be vigorously defended um, throughout. That's my report for the month, subject to any questions from the board. Uh, for more full report on litigation will occur at the Personnel Committee.
Any questions for the turn? Seeing now, we'll go into reading of dedications.
We have the county auditors' report of real property tax corrections for September twenty twenty-five. Capital District Regional Off-TRF betting corp financial reports dated May thirty-one into thirty twenty twenty-five. Adirondack North Country Associations twenty twenty-four Annual Report. Letter from Hodgson Russ on behalf of AC Power LLC and its affiliate AC Power Forty-seven LLC. Providing notice of a solar energy project to be relocated on Ridge Road in the town of Queensberry pursuant to real property tax section forty-eight seventh. And the letter from New York State Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. Regarding Chestertown Historic District Boundary Increase and Additional Documentation. And resolution number two fifty of twenty twenty-five from Washington County. Entitled approving contract between SUNY Adirondack and the Educational Support Personnel Association for years twenty twenty-six through twenty.
Go on to the reading of resolutions.
Proclamation numbers forty through forty-three, the report of committee on assessment goals and resolution numbers three forty-six to four hundred. Were distributed to the members of the Board of Supervisors and posted to the Warren County website on September twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Four resolution numbers one through four were distributed and posted on October tenth. Um, oh, I'm sorry, that was a mispronounced, there are four resolutions. Proclamation before you are number forty, Warren County Health Services, month forty-one, breast cancer awareness, month forty-two, fire prevention week. And forty-three, green light for military service county. That's all I have for um.
Are there any uh, requests for proposals for any resolutions? Seeing now, uh, we'll open that up for public discussion on any proposed resolution. Anybody from the public wish to speak on any proposed resolution? Please come up with an address. Your name and where you're from. And state the resolution.
Everybody. Uh, recently, there's been a lot of talk about LakeGeorge.tv. Who we are, what it is, how we operate, and what we've achieved. Now, over a week ago, we sent a real complete package to all of you. That contained a lot of information over the last three years. It contained metrics, it contained data, it contained the campaigns that we produced. And it contained testimonials from businesses and from individuals. So what we're asking for today is that you vote based on the merits of our accomplishments, which are pretty significant. Now, just three years ago, the concept of something completely new. It was a unique turnkey, twenty-four seven connected TV streaming service. Dedicated to marketing Warren County businesses. It's available on all digital platforms, got apps on Google, Roku, Apple, Amazon Fire. It's monitored and maintained twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And it's updated daily. Now, we're not an event, we're not an attraction, and we're not a website. Now, close collaboration and ideas and suggestions start going way back to three years, with a lot of you in this room. Is really how this thing was formed and what it became. And quite honestly, that's driven us and my team to achieve the level of success that we've had with this. The bottom line is that LGTV, you're providing free marketing to all those related entities. In Warren County, giving businesses, large and small, a full footing. In marketing themselves and connecting to the public. And one of the surprises that I've mentioned a few times about this is that collectively, all these videos. But let's face it, some are sophisticated, some are not so sophisticated. But what they do collectively is something very important in marketing. Is they demonstrate the personality of Warren County. So you might hit a diner video that's not too great, you might hit four William Henry, which has a foot. But it doesn't make a difference, the level of sophistication is not judged by the viewer. They're looking at it to sense what the personality of this county is, as to whether or not they would like to visit here. Big difference, uh, something that's very important. We're a private company. We're under contract to provide a service to Warren County. This is not dissimilar to many other contracts that you have with other providers across a lot of different categories. Warren County, by the way, is the sole client. It's a sole source of revenue. We don't monetize the platform. We give a lot of free advice, even production for small businesses in Warren County that need a hand. They don't understand how to put it together themselves. And we're on a fixed retainer, by the way, with no cost of living increases. So, moving forward, it's our goal to take the next six months to kind of sort out. A few issues that we'd like to clarify and get, and get settled. We're going to go over details, we're going to go over some ideas that uh, that we've learned over the last three years. To ensure that the best path forward for this platform, it's not this next year, but it's the years to come. Thanks.
And this is Jesse H. Jackson, and that is talking about resolutions three seventy. Anybody else wish to address any resolution? Right for the power. Seeing now, supervisor.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to um, ask if our uh, department head would be interested in giving us a. A recommendation as far as uh, resolution number three seventy goes, I think that uh. A lot of the metrics and the data that we get given our um, forehand to many of the town supervisors and. I put a lot of faith in our department head and I certainly would like to hear her opinion on uh, resolution number three seventy.
Morning, um. I was asked a similar question at the committee meeting, and so I made sure that I did some homework here. And the job, my role as tourism director is to bring forth information to the committee. Not only represent tourism, but to also bring forth information to the committee to the best of my ability. And I think taking away all of the information that has been provided, this is a contract. For a dashboard, for a platform, a platform that is unique in its kind and showcasing videos. So I did a little research in the platform world of digital entertainment. And there are over two hundred types of digital entertainment. And these are in the forms of both digital on TVs that are downloadable via apps. And providing a little bit more information to help you make sound decisions. And those apps are viewed by various persons based on their interests. There are over a million apps as of twenty twenty-five in the industry available to look at. Of those, there are two hundred digital entertainment, to give you some examples, Netflix, they're all subscriber based. Now, a lot of these are subscriber based and paid, some of them are subscriber based and not paid. Which is what Lake George TV is. Uh, so I think that missing link that we're missing here, and it's no disrespect to anyone or. It's the contract does not require the analytics or the details of the dashboard itself. There are three types of interactions on this dashboard. The advertisers, which are all our businesses who provide um, provide videos to be uploaded. And or to be edited by Hook Communications to be uploaded and shared via the platform. I'm not speaking to marketing, they also do that, but this is the digital platform, this is what's in the contract. The other piece is the um, subscribers. That's those who, again, as subscriber, don't think of it as a paid piece, it's free. Anyone can subscribe from anywhere. So the number of subscribers that sign up to access these videos, now, that's the app. You can still access the, the online portal without being a subscriber. At least that's what I understand. I could be wrong in that aspect, but again, there's three pieces. The third piece is the visitors, those that can visit and interact with these particular things. Those are those people that we want to bring here to enjoy our backyard. So, this, I cannot answer your question directly, uh, Supervisor Patchett. Because I don't know how the dashboard itself works. Within the advertisers, except for there are over twelve hundred videos and advertisers represented. I don't know where, how those advertisers and how many of those videos have been viewed by those advertisers. We then don't know what the um, the subscription base is. So how many subscribers do we have? How many are local, how many are far away? What, who are those that are actually interacting with the platform? And then the third piece is the visitors, those that aren't necessarily subscribers, but those that are, that are coming in and their demographics. That information will be able to help me showcase how this compares to other. Unique products like this. One thing that I can compare it to is a podcast, but it's again, a very different avenue um, from tours of destinations. Um, so, that's, I, I don't necessarily have a recommendation or not. I think that there's additional information that was not requested in the original uh, contract. Um, for us to be able to provide you with that sound recommendation, one way or another.
Thank you. Supervisor, while you're at your end now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of Lake George TV, I do have another piece going on, but just for the rest of the supervisors that was involved. In uh, helping with the contract when it first occurred. And um, one of the things that we did is struggle with is how to come up with metrics. That determine whether this thing was doing what we hoped it would do. Uh, I think from my understanding, we're exceeding all those metrics. So, um, to ask for additional metrics, I'm off word. Again, many of you that have been at the Parkinson's Tax Committees have heard me mention before. That we need metrics on everything we're doing related to tourism. But don't want to single out just Lake George TV. I think we need to look across the board to see where we're winning, where we're losing, so we can make good decisions. And hopefully, uh, if I'm successful uh, for the next term, that's going to be one of my major focuses, try to figure out. How we measure that. Uh, I have data from historical data that I think need to look at closely. To say, are we really making a difference? And is our eight million dollars that we're going to be spending next year on tourism promotion really making a difference? And I have a lot of questions, a lot of doubts, but that's all I'll mention in terms of that was mission of the construction.
Any other discussions, Supervisor?
I think one of the components um, that the supervisors need to, um. Maybe you could explain it better, is the sweepstakes, and maybe that's not the, the correct term for it, the greatest, greatest game and so many others. Of what that offers, what, what information you gather, what do you do with that information? Do you have to download the app to participate in that, the answer to that is. But I think it should be explained that, you know, tho- those sweepstakes or is that the proper, that's home sweepstakes? Or advertise on Facebook, Instagram and social media platforms. Anyone could participate with that, once they do that, you get their email and, and some good workable data to. Does, does those emails come back to the county and can they, can you collaborate with the county? And work with those in any other way or. I don't know, I, I think a lot of us don't, don't understand that component, and I think it's a valuable component.
Ed Larkin, Lake George TV. Uh, yes, you're talking about our giveaways, uh, last year we did four of them, uh, this year we've um. Done six of them. And uh, when we do a giveaway, we put together a, a package essentially, uh, so we just did a fall kaleidoscope. Uh, was essentially highlighting in the shoulder season, uh, all the reasons to come up to, to Warren County in the fall. And so we partnered with Rev Rail, Snowy Resort with uh, uh. Sagamore and I'm guessing somebody else, oh, West Mountain, uh, West Mountain. Uh, our, and through though, we, we promote those through paid uh, social media. Uh, as we also do Google advertising as well. And uh, I believe with that campaign, we had something like a hundred seventy thousand views. Uh, we collected about eighteen hundred uh, entrance. And the way our giveaways work is that we share all of the contact data with the uh, participating partners. So, last year, uh, we shared over five thousand emails. Um, and contact information with all of our partners, our giveaways. So we're not just getting views and clicks, but we're actually collecting hard and. Uh, contact information and then turning that over to our partners, so that they can market to those individuals in the future. Um, to, you know, to uh, Heather's point, uh, subscribers, uh, I, you know, that's, it, it's, it's. A rather um, interesting concept with this because, no, you don't have to subscribe. Uh, we made it so that it's very easy for consumers to just come to the platform and access it. And so last year, we exposed uh, over seven hundred thousand people to the platform through our paid. Marketing and through our efforts. Um, and, you know, of those, we have several thousand emails that we've collected that we've shared with our partners. Uh, we also have people that have downloaded the app, but you don't need to, you've tried to make it very easy for consumers. To be able to access the platform, but not have to give us their information. Nobody wants to give more information, I mean, everybody's concerned about giving their information away these days. And so we've made it very easy for that to happen. Um, we also are not really able to measure some things, so we know that we got seven hundred thousand views last year. We know what videos people watched, we know how long they've watched, I'd like to be the number, it was over a billion seconds. Uh, last year of, of video uh, view time. Um, we're also, we also have physical presence, we've created sub channels for various chambers. So if you walk into the Bolt Landing Chamber of Commerce, on their large screen TV, it's Lake George TV playing the videos of their members. Same thing with um, Warrensburg, same thing with North Warren. If you walk through the Lake George Visitor Information Center, there are three televisions there that are playing Lake George TV. And so the twenty-six thousand people a year that walk through that visitor center are getting access to those videos. Um, how many of them are actually, you know, creating an action? We wish we knew that, unfortunately, we don't know that. Uh, we do know what our clicks are, the, the hard clicks that we get. But um, like all marketing efforts, I mean, I think, I don't think the tourism department would argue with me on this, none of the chambers would. That we can't tell you how many people actually put their money in that. Um, that's not really a reflection of our platform, it's a reflection of the reality that most of the businesses here don't have any way to say, this person came in and booked a room because of this action. It just doesn't happen that way, that's not how uh marketing works um in this, in this tourist world. Uh, but we do know how many views we get, we do know how many people are exposed to the platform. You know, the, the one thing, I didn't expect to talk about any metrics uh today. Um, in fact, the only thing that, that I was going to say was that um I got two testimonials from people that won our latest giveaways. Uh, and I'm actually going to take the opportunity to give you that. But I think it's, I think that's important. You know, you, like Jesse said, we sent a packet to each of you with all of our quarterly reports for the last three years, as well as all the presentations that we've done. And I believe it was thirty pages of testimonials, largely from businesses, because those are the folks with the, we get that information from the most. Uh, but two weekends ago, Patty from Connecticut, who was the winner of our Take Flight giveaway. She came back to Lake George after thirty years. She was joined by her mother from the Hudson Valley and her sister from Long Island. And she told us that the Take Flight giveaway initially caught her attention, but it was the videos on Lake George TV that truly amazed her. Showing just how much there is to do here. And Patty and her family ended up extending their stay beyond the giveaway prize, booking additional hotel nights. Eating out, exploring Fort William Henry, and discovering events like the world's largest garage sale, garage sale in Oktoberfest. Uh, both of which she returned to the county to attend. Um, she's now sharing Lake George TV with her friends. And in her words, she called it a great way to discover everything there is to see and do in the Georgia area. Um, the second one was just last weekend, the winner of our Fall Kaleidoscope uh giveaway was Amy from Lakewood, New Jersey. Um, Amy is a fifty-four-year-old returning visitor. Her father vacationed in the Lake George area as a child and returned later with his own young family. But she hadn't been here for thirty years, because she always wondered, well, is Lake George worth the, the visit? Was it worth the trip anymore? Because it's pretty far from Lake uh Ledgewood, uh, New Jersey. Um, but after seeing our giveaway and the partner videos that were associated with that. She decided to enter and she was inspired to reconnect with this area. So she was up here this past weekend, she sent us about a half a dozen videos of them taking the chairlift ride at West Mountain and going on the, the Rev Rail uh trip. And she, she filmed Stone Gate, her husband narrated uh them checking into Stone Gate Resort. Beautiful one-bedroom cottage that they had there. Um, so she and her husband came up and they actually celebrated their uh November third anniversary up here. And they used their prize as, as the anniversary uh getaway. But um, but also more importantly, they, they experienced much more of what Lake George or Warren County uh had to offer, you know, in the process. And they'll be back. Um, Amy, much like Patty, you know, they rediscovered uh the Warren County area and Lake George through Lake George TV. And both of them are not just returning visitors, but they're folks that are going to become their advocates now for the Lake George area, they're telling their friends, you should come up to Lake George, it's really cool up there, there's a lot to see and do. Um, you know, my point is that beyond the hard data and the numbers that we've shared. We're hearing from real people that Lake George TV is inspiring both past visitors um and new audiences as well to, you know, discover or rediscover the Lake George area. And I think that's the most powerful piece of this. That's really probably the thing that you, you know, really want to hear and what you should judge us on. So, any questions on here?
Thank you. Anybody else from the board on uh resolution, on resolution three seven?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, at first, I'd like to start by requesting a roll call for resolution number three seven zero. Second, I note that the actual resolution of resolution three seven zero says we are, so somebody would need to make that change, if we in fact are going to make it six months. I'm going to just run through, I try to stay out of opinions, I'm going to try to stick with some facts today. This has not been sent out to RFP for like-kind services. While it is not required, it is the very bedrock of what we do as municipalities and I would think as a county also, so that we know we're getting the one hundred percent best value for our constituents. Next, I want to talk about, I think this should go for a third-party review. I did receive, so that we can substantiate the effectiveness, somebody that actually understands metrics and data to be able to look at it and, you know, give us a really good solid answer on if it's working. I guess there has been some financial data that had been uh submitted. Uh, I was just shown it today, maybe I did get it in an email, I must have missed the email, or maybe I didn't get the email, I can't speak to that. However, what I saw today was about a total of eighteen words for a summary of eight hundred thousand dollars. Anyone that looked at that financial summary of accountability, it's I mean, I don't know what else to say other than it's laughable, we don't have any way to authenticate it. What I heard today was that we, we did receive a comprehensive package. However, who here in this room can raise their hand and tell me that they can authenticate any of the information that were being given in those quarterly reports? And I think that's what our tourism director is asking for, is access to the platform for her department, so that they, we can actually identify if it's working or not. Access to the dashboard, so that we have the actual proof. Right now, it's just conjecture, we're taking their word for it, not acceptable in my humble opinion. I will also note that this is the only business, to my knowledge, that is one hundred percent fully funded by occupancy tax dollars in Warren County. I just don't know that I believe that that's the, the purpose, and it's a good precedent that we're setting, as I also said in committee meetings. I also made the point that we should own the intellectual data. Meaning, just to name a few, the email list, the URL, the app. We are in year three of the contract. It's potentially has a three-year extension. Now would be our time to stand our ground and negotiate and own the intellectual data. And anyone that thinks that at the end of six years, once we're about what we're to be, one point six million dollars in do it. That all the intellectual data isn't going to get sold off to the highest bidder. I would like to tell you that I think that you're incorrect. It'll either be sold off to the highest bidder, or we'll start charging Warren County taxpayers for this service that we paid for, I mean, I can only relate it to a builder, right? When a builder builds a house and the homeowner pays him to build a house, who owns the house at the end? The homeowner owns the house, and we're letting the builder own the house at the end. The last thing that I would just talk about today is transparency. I don't know how many of my colleagues got the financial transparency statement, but as I say, I find it just grossly inadequate, and I know what we submit as municipalities, and it doesn't look like that. I want to be very careful in how I say this, but I would be remiss if I did not say it. We have a fiduciary responsibility to Warren County taxpayers to uphold accountability. I haven't seen any information that we can really even substantiate as a county. And, you know, with the utmost respect, I would just say to my, my colleagues that I think that we have an absolute fiduciary responsibility to strike down resolution three seven zero with the communications. And I, I hope that you uh, you really take that seriously today, and uh that we we do what's best for Warren County taxpayers. I mean this with all due respect again, and I think that there is a large number of people in this room that what I'm saying is the God's honest truth. And there should be some reservation in passing this resolution here today. Thank you very much, my name is Joshua Patchett from the town of Hays.
Roger Patchett, you brought up maybe a six, six-month contract. Did you want to introduce that as a, as a floor resolution? As an amendment to this three seventy or do you just?
I mean, I am introducing to the town, to the Board of Supervisors that I've been recommending we strike it down. But a six-month contract would be better than a one-year contract. But I am in no way voting yes under any length of time.
My question is, you want to introduce amendment three seventy to make it a six-month contract? Just offering it up, as you mentioned it.
I introduce the amendment, making it a six-month contract with the, in addition, asking for financial transparency, access to the platform for our Warren County Tourism Department, so that we can substantiate things, and also owning all of the intellectual data. That is my introduction, yes, sir. That's what I'm introducing, yes, sir.
We have a second. The rest that remains to say. Supervisor, why?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, this is a budget-related question, but um, our budget officer mentioned uh three eighty-eight, three ninety-two. Um, this is increases in our road projects. And from all the information I've heard uh from the budget uh team is that um we're in some dire straits, how we're going to be able to cover the gaps. And I just did a quick roll-up of all these, it's over seven hundred and fifty thousand hours. I'm curious, is that something that we had planned for, reserved, we had some reserve before? So overrides in terms of our TV dollars expenses? Or is this something that's coming out of our general fund and maybe we're difficult to still balance our budgets?
You want supervisor, any address or?
Good morning, everyone. No supervisor, well, this is not coming out of the general fund. This is funds that were left over in other projects within the county growth. These, these are mostly federally projects, in fact, all of them are federally projects. Uh, I'll give you the example of the, the Quaker Road project, which I believe we had a saving on that project of about one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That's money that we already had in the project, already budgeted in the county growth fund, we're just moving in to cover now another project. So this is not, this is not going out of the taxpayers. This is not coming out of the general fund, it's already mine, it's in our budget. Just moving in to cover all the costs.
Thank you very much, this is your answer as well, you're welcome. Any other discussion on resolutions?
Supervisor. Thank you, Chairman. Resolution three eighty-one overriding the tax cap, this line. Fully understand this, um. The state comptroller's office uh sets this tax cap. And then um also with an inflation factor. And the inflation factor for fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six exceeded the annual defined two percent maximum allowable, allowable levy, girl, by more than eleven percent. Um, and then adding to that, the cost of state mandated programs. And I'll, I'll single one out. Court order competency examination of the restoration service of the section seven thirty, the criminal procedure law. Am I correct? Four or five years ago, we budgeted about twenty-five thousand, uh, maybe forty thousand dollars for this. In this year, that cost will be able to more exceed one billion dollars. So that's a huge addition. You know, it's, it's no wonder we have a hard time maintaining tax cap and also satisfying our budget needs. So this affords us the opportunity if we pass this, should we need it. The twenty twenty-six Warren County budget, if it exceeds the tax levy limit for twenty twenty-six. So we don't know yet what budget, what effect this will have on the budget, in other words. Will we, will that budget, will we need to exceed the tax cap? Or am I ridiculous here?
I, I just, our conversations with the, the budget officer, he wouldn't have asked for us to pass that off. I think we were going to, so maybe I'm just such, is that is the case? Uh, again, I address it.
Frank, sure. Uh, the tax gap this year is two point six five percent, which is one billion, three hundred eighty-three thousand dollars. You had uh ten million dollars in requests, we're down to six. Get it down five, we'll be doing pretty good, unless you, unless the board wants to go. You know, make uh personnel cuts or other change I can operate. Uh, so yes, we will be over the tax gap. I would put forth that uh this tax cap was a good politics when it was introduced. But they should have put a time limit on it, because they basically dug a hole, not only for the county, but for all the municipalities. Did their best to stay under the two percent for years, and didn't raise the funds that they needed to raise. And, and, and now, now the retirement cost increased this year. And the health insurance alone take up the two point six five percent, they're going to have one trillion. That's not counting uh all the unions, all the increases in wages, that's not counting a half million dollars. Taking truck drivers that we, that we uh did this year, that was not budgeted for. We're too, we're just catching up right now with the, with the four and a half, five billion dollars that uh, that we did in twenty twenty-two for uh, where everyone received five thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. You know, we're just kind of getting, getting over that, it's taking three years. And so, you know.
Well, I agree, hundred percent. They've been basically that back here, state sets this cap. And moving forward, they continue to pile on more unfunded mandates and expenses and taking costs that heretofore would have either been paid some large percentage by the state, a hundred percent or less, or whatever, it just completely cutting them out, so.
The cap was fine at, at the time, I, I think it was probably a good idea.
Oh, I agree.
But, but it should have ended, because, because it's basically hurt everybody, I mean.
I agree. Did we, did we not do this last year that we?
Yeah.
We did pass the law.
Right, so this is not necessarily something new, it's what it was forced into. You know, I would, I reluctantly will support this, but I would say, I don't know if we have a lot of other choice.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Surprised, you know, you, you bring up a really great point. And, and it's what I've been really kind of saying for years. And, you know, unfortunately, New York State just does what they want. And the last board meeting, well, the board meeting before the, the short uh special we had. That half a million dollars for seven thirty. I was a no. The street two was no, even though it was a court order. And the question is, is that we just keep taking it, we keep taking it from New York. So New York doesn't have like a tax cap per se, you know, on other properties. So what they do is, oh, we're over, let's dump it on the county. All right, and once it comes to us, it's got to go out to the taxpayers. And, you know, it, it, and I've been saying this And, you know, it, it, and I've been saying this fair, when is enough enough? New York State, you, we have to increase our pensions. You know, it's mandatory that the pensions go up for employees. Medicaid costs. Right? State just turns around, dumps it on the county. What are we supposed to do? So, you know, we sit there and say, so, you know, Nate. Uh, Mr. Eto and I, surprise me, sorry. You know, kind of had a conversation. What would have happened if we voted that day? And we voted down that court order. Does anybody, you know, thought about that? What happens if we did it? We stood up against New York State. I think other counties would join us. Now, unfortunately, due to the court systems and everything's going on, you know, in these appeals, it doesn't. It doesn't pan out because. The state's going to protect themselves, do whatever they have to. But I've been saying that since I've sat in the seat is, when is it up enough? And if we don't start standing and barking back and start saying no. It's just going to hit us all. And it's tough to go out there and pay the prices that we pay. And we, and we pay it. And it's the same thing with the prices, you know, I, I, I went out to dinner last week and I, I, you know. A New York strip state, fifty three dollars. That, that to me, you know, back in the day, a thirty six dollar file man you are was a killer, you know, but now for a New York street, nothing I'm saying is bad steak, but. But we paid it. You know, people pay it. So, you know, it's standing up. For the people and down in Albany, and that's where we need our legislators down in Albany to start standing up and saying. We, we gotta stop, what are we, where do we stop? Where do we turn? But you can't keep turning around at the last minute. Right before we're trying to finalize on a budget. And dump all these extra costs on us because it's just, it's not fair to the taxpayers and it's not fair. For us to have to answer these questions at such a short moment. So I agree with you and. I am not in favor of this because I would like to say no to everything. And see where it goes from New York. Let New York State take us to court then. Because I'm, I'm hopefully the rest of the other counties in New York will come, come with us because I believe they're in the same boat we are.
When it comes to exceeding the tax cap in the beginning, when they first started, there was a penalty if you did go over it. There's no longer any penalty. There's no reason not to exceed the tax cap. And I know that in Thorne, we've done it and what it does is reset your number. So when, whatever it needs to be, that's where we should be. Not trying to stay under and cut things that we shouldn't, or you're inadequately funded. So I'm in favor totally of exceeding the tax cap and you'll see if we do it right, right now, next year, we might be able to stay. Under what, what it would be because it'll reset.
Anybody else?
Just one further thought on resolution three seven zero. I do also question that, you know, we're entering into a contract as it stands for one year for two hundred and seventy four thousand and eight, eight hundred dollars. You know, the platform is built, the work has been done. Really, it's just maintaining. That number, even if you aren't favored, it's, I think it should be half of that number, half of the two seventy four eight. And I just wanted to put my opinion on the record for that as well. Thank you.
Anybody else on, and the resolution?
I'll comment on, on resolution three seventy and. Um, I have to push back too, too much on, on our supervisor Patchit. I think he brings up some very good points and I love his questions and I encourage him to keep asking. But as far as. Um, looking at the numbers that we acquired and numbers. Sure, we like to see numbers all the time, but they're not the only business. Um, for example, you know, who makes our, our, for sure. So based on videos, they're offering a service. We're not. Digging into that numbers. We pay for a service if we have it with the service. Write the check for it and that's that. Um, it's not an event. It's a, it's a service they're offering. So I'm not so sure. How, how much we want to push on, on getting numbers back. Uh, but. The company's not the same company it was three years ago. They're an established business now. It's a mature company and there's. You know, if you want, we're looking for more out, maybe we can collaborate with the county tourism. Going forward, I noticed some metrics into due contract. Um, supervisor Patchit, there are some, some good requirements here. Uh, make a. Uh, if we knew this or if we knew this for one year, follow the rules a little closer, maybe we can work a little closer with like. Tourism department, like I say, it's not the same business. You've built something to be sure it's established. Maybe we could work with that data to, to uh bring in a better ROI or clearer ROI. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Hey, anybody else?
I just, I'm wondering if maybe the hang up on my motion was the fact that I added a bunch of other things to resolution three seven zero. I would uh make a motion to amend resolution three seven zero to a six month term instead of a one year term.
You're bringing it up as a floor resolution.
Yes, sir.
You have a motion, I surprised back at the motion, uh six month. Does anybody second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought Benny did just, Mr. Chairman, I'll second it.
Okay, we'll have discussion.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to say that um, based on Mr. Jackson's comments, that there's a lot of uh new things being talked about over the next six months. Um, I would support that. I was going to second it. Gives us more time to, to just, there's obviously been a lot of chat about this and. Gives us more time to kind of feel comfortable about a vote. Uh, and I would just ask that with the motion. Chairman, would the motion be for fifty percent of the, the dollar amount would be for one thirty seven fifty years or any?
The cap would be one thirty seven.
Supervisor Connor, we had to answer that one question. Any other comments about the floor resolution, I guess we. We vote on the amount, we're going to vote on the amendment three seventy now. And in areas, it's second, we've had discussion and any other discussion on three seventy? It a, that's the third uh to the roll call.
Just to be, to reiterate, this is to amend resolution three hundred and seventy, amending standing agreement with good communications. Would be for a flat six month uh extension in the amount of one thirty seven four hundred. Um, Ms. Gilligan? Yes, Ms. Turner? Now. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Oh.
Mr. Straub?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
It's Runyon?
No.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Maydeck?
No.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
That passes with five hundred and sixty six votes in favor. So when you vote on um resolution three seventy, which has been called for a roll call vote, it will be with the amendment term.
Are we ready to vote on the rest of the resolution?
With regard to amendment, uh, propose uh, proposed resolution three fifty seven. Did we need to, it does say terminating twenty twenty six. I did confirm by message with the department head of meetings twenty twenty five. The one week training looking to take place next week and terminate and finish next week, excuse me, next month. It's like two, five, three, five.
It's just, I think. Yeah, we'll fix that after. You don't have to amend the resolution and fix the type of.
We're ready to vote on resolutions.
Wow. Mr. Chairman, one more thing. We're back to these three seventy. I have to say this, as what I'm curious about is that the press may be taking supervisor Patchit's. Comments as something you want to disagree to by the. The board. I do not agree at all with my two creating these questions and the approach. Um, but I believe that there's been much more going on with this platform. I definitely still need to understand. And um, the press decides that it's important to engage with us as we go through this six month program. To help us get the right message out to the community. We'll leave the perspective. So, Chairman, it's all right, we're here, yeah.
Ready to vote on resolution? Any more?
Just a quick question, sir. You have a question? Yeah, I have a question. You're going to do it six months. When, when does it start? When does it end? And we, we tourism and the whole town. We have a cycle, you know, we have winter cycle, we have fall cycle, we have a summer cycle. I think you should put some kind of a start. You don't want to start it in January first and then June. February, August, September, and October. That, that's, I'm never looking at it that way. Starts November first.
That's correct. It would end April thirtieth of twenty twenty six. That would be six months.
It'll start, so it'll go over the winter, be out the summer, the spring.
It would be a continuation. It would be an extension agreement from the current contract that ends October thirty first. And it would start November first of twenty twenty five. And that six month contract would then terminate. If it's not renewed, April thirtieth of twenty twenty six.
I think it'd be looking to be good.
You would be going through a process similar to the process that the board is, is now completing. Uh, in March, going into April fourth. It's my understanding, it's what the Vanderos request.
Any other? Roll call to any other discussion? Seeing that, last tickler.
And resolution three forty six, making supplemental appropriations. Skill again? Yes. Ms. Turner? Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
And Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon? Yes. Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred twelve votes in favor. Resolution three forty seven, amending Warren County budget for twenty twenty five for various departments. Skill again? Yes. Ms. Turner? Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub? Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred twelve votes in favor. Resolution. Three sixty nine. Enacting local law number three of twenty twenty five entitled a local law and posting additional mortgage reporting tax in Warren County. Skill again? Yes. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
No.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
No.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred seventy six votes in favor. Resolution three seventy as invented, which is amending and extending agreement with good communications for tourism revitalization and rejuvenation services. That would be a six month extension at one hundred thirty seven thousand four hundred dollars. Skill again? Yes. Ms. Turner? Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
No.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
No.
Mr. Straub?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred fifty five votes in favor. Resolution three seventy seven. Amending table organization of Warren County salary compensation plan for twenty twenty five to create a position within the sheriff's office and reclassify a position with the health services division. Skill again? Yes. Ms. Turner? Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yeah.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas? Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred twelve votes in favor. Resolution three eighty one. Enacting local law number four of twenty twenty five entitled a local law to authorize overriding the property tax levy limit established by general municipal law section three C for the twenty twenty six Warren County budget. Skill again? Yes. Ms. Turner? Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with eight hundred twenty three votes in favor. Resolution three eighty three. Authorizing appropriation of funds from the vehicle reserve to department of social services budget to cover additional costs associated with the purchase of a replacement vehicle and amending the twenty twenty five Warren County budget. Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred twelve votes in favor. Resolution three eighty seven. Decreasing capital project H four oh four Quaker Road pavement preservation project authorizing transfer of funds or devending Warren County budget for twenty twenty five. Ms. Gilligan? Yes.
Ms. Turner? Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchit?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred twelve votes in favor.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there any way that we could combine eight, eighty nine, ninety? Ninety one, they're increasing capital projects. Anybody have a? Ninety one, they're increasing capital projects, anybody have a?
I would say you could probably combine right through three ninety three, those are all increasing and establishing capital.
All right, good. Yes.
One session just. The next vote is going to be for resolution three eighty through three ninety three, all of which are uh increasing and establishing projects for the Department of Public Works. Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
All of those resolutions pass uh with nine hundred twelve votes in favor. Thank you. Um, so we're now on to three ninety four. Uh, authorizing appropriation of funds for the general fund unappropriated fund balance to Department of Social Services budget to cover the county sheriff Medicaid through the remainder of twenty twenty five and amending the twenty twenty five Warren County budget. Ms. Gilligan?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred twelve votes in favor. Resolution three ninety five, authorizing appropriation of funds for computer reserve fund to the information technology budget. Skill again?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Crusito?
Yes.
Mr. Merlino?
Yes.
Mr. Straub?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Street E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with nine hundred twelve votes in favor.